Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Monday, November 6, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. And if our folks from the veterans want to come forward, please, you can say the Pledge of Allegiance for us, please, if you don't mind. You can come here. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And we're going to have our veterans say the Pledge of Allegiance. Do the veterans want to come forward, please?
No jokes, sir, no jokes.
He's going to get jokes. And will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? We'll be honored if you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the fight in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there any, is there any, is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations, and I have one I'm presenting today to our Federation of War Veterans Societies. And I'll come down there.
Come on, you too, Trey.
I hope you have your jokes ready, okay?
No, no, no.
And I got a cane. I'll take you out with a hook. Whereas the Federation of War Veterans Societies has formed in 1919 for the purpose of providing an annual Veterans Day parade in the city of Pittsburgh to honor more than 42,000 war veterans living within the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas the Federation of War Veterans Societies of Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh will hold its annual, 104th Annual Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, November 11, 2023, at 10:30 a.m., starting at the intersection of 10th and Liberty Avenue. And whereas the grand marshal this year is John Banazak. Mr. Banazak played for the Pittsburgh Steelers from 1975 to 1981, and he is a three-time Super Bowl champion. He served in the United States Marine Corps and was inducted into the Marine Corps Sports Hall of Fame in 2017. And whereas, the Federation continues to educate the residents of the city of Pittsburgh on the importance of recognizing our veterans and all they have sacrificed, not only for the city of Pittsburgh, but also for our nation. And whereas, it is always a great honor and privilege for our city to pay tribute to the men and women who served and have served in the armed forces, in our armed forces. The city of Pittsburgh does hereby call upon all of our citizens to observe November 11 as Veterans Day and to honor all war veterans living within the city of Pittsburgh and solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly and preserve our, to preserve our heritage and of our freedom. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Federation of War Veterans Society of Allegheny County for their continued dedication and to all of our veterans for all of their hard work in making each year's Veterans Day Parade a great success. And be it further resolved that the Council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, November 11, 2023 to be Federation of War Veterans Society's Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. And every year, our veterans come and ask us to please come out and support their, their parade. And it's such a small thing for us to do, given all the sacrifices that they've made for us. And I really hope that people would consider coming out, supporting them to show that, that we appreciate what they have done for us. So I'm going to let you, who wants to speak first? Oh. Well, let me give this to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the Veterans Day Parade, of course, is being held on Veterans Day, November 11, and coincidentally, it is this Saturday. It is the longest continuously running parade in the United States, 104 years. It'll step off at 10:30 in the morning. And it's one more thing that the citizens of Pittsburgh should be proud of. We pride ourselves on being the city of champions because of all of our sports teams, but this is another thing that the citizens can be proud of. And we really hope that the people do respond this year and come out and watch the parade. Our parade committee has done a tremendous amount of work this year. It's unbelievable what they've done. And we hope that that results in a good turnout. Thank you very much.
Who wants to go next? You go.
Bob, you, sir. I just want to thank everyone from council here for all the help you have done for us. I'm representing the American Legion. And thank you. I hope everyone turns out for the parade this year. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Come on.
Representing the VFW, Allegheny County, I'd like to thank everyone for supporting our parade and all you do for the veterans. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? So let me just say, the veterans every year bring their own comedian, Mr. Silk. You're going to come forward. But this year, I have a cane.
This is a flyer for the parade, and I was just going to pass it out, if you guys want to. Oh, yeah. There's going to be a flyover also at the parade. There's a lot of things. You know, people go to a lot of parades here, and I understand that. But this is the one time that you can come and honor the veterans who really are the backbone. And so that would be wonderful. And the weather's supposed to be good on Saturday. We always have it, well, we mostly have it on Veterans Day, but now we are going to have it each year on Veterans Day. So I just happen to have some, some things I picked up off the news. This is alternative news, things you can't hear on the regular news. So I, I don't know whether you saw this or not. There was a thing about, there was an article that said, "For the person that stole my antidepressant pills, I hope they're happy now." It wasn't good, I know. It's the worst. And then, you know, you all should know this stuff. I mean, this stuff's pretty easy, you know. People mention the Bible occasionally, and you know, about, everybody has a story about Noah and the ark. I mean, I know that. So Noah invited all his neighbors on the ark, but they declined. They said, "Take a rain check." It wasn't good, I know. Some are worse. I don't have a tie either. I can't pull on here. Okay, and then, and I know, and I have a math question. I asked that lady back there, and she got it. So this should be easy for you guys. All right, if two's company and three's a crowd, what's four and five? Nine.
Okay.
Wait, wait.
I got the hook.
Get the hook.
All right, how about this? You know, some months have 31 days, others have 30. How many have 28? All 12. Come on. All right, all right. If you had an oil lamp, a stove, and a fireplace, what would you like first? Yeah, see, you knew that one. All right.
Okay, last one, Mr. Silk. We're going to get on with business.
I shouldn't say this, but I say it anyway. Do you know why men are attracted to intelligent women? Opposites attract.
Do members all want to come up for the photo, please? And he lives in my district. He kisses me at every event, don't you, Mr. Silk? And I want to thank Trey Hernandez, who came to join us today with his grandfather. Councilwoman Gross is online, right? Okay. Do you want to get a tour with Anthony? If anybody wants to go with him, go with him. You can all go with Anthony. Do you all want to go back and get a tour with Anthony? If you want, if anyone wants to get a tour with Anthony from the veterans, if you want to get a tour with Anthony with the veterans, the veterans want to get a tour with Councilman Coghill, just go through that door.
Wait, what's on that?
The vault. Councilman Coghill's doing tours.
Oh, who's giving a tour?
Councilman Coghill.
Oh, okay. Although I have my jacket on here.
You can come back through this way.
Oh, I can back through?
Can you give it to him, to my, to the little boy? That little boy that was here. You don't have to walk around. Give it to the councilman. We're waiting for Councilman. We need Councilwoman Gross to come back out. Sergeant Ross, can you tell Councilwoman Gross we need her to come back out? We don't, we can't. Tell them to go back and see your staff. She's here. She left. She was coming and left. She's what? She's on the Zoom. Okay, just making sure. Okay, and then we have Councilwoman Warwick One to be read into the record, proclamation?
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill 2138. Be it further resolved that the Council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, November 11, 2023 to be Greenfield Community Awards Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
And we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations, I mean, public comment. And we have, I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters concerning official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Perfamity and threats will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who is a true servant of the Pittsburgh firefighters and the public. From the 1970s until 2021, he had various positions within the city of Pittsburgh. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Pennsylvania Constitution is titled, "The Declaration of Rights." The entire article is concerned with establishing the principle that the people are the sovereigns, not the state, which would include municipalities, school boards, and they shall not harm the people or will be held accountable. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. In the Bon Air neighborhood, we are being threatened with a detrimental building continuing to deteriorate, costing taxpayers thousands per month. We say no to anything except a green space to replace the school building. Excrement in hallways and crime is not acceptable to Bon Air residents. This was from my husband's funeral, written by Italian chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately describes. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder memorial green space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. The Pittsburgh Public Schools stated WHO guidance when it closed the schools for months. WHO is an unelected, diplomatically immune, tax-exempt group. Eighty-four percent of the funding for it is from external commercial sources. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation is an example of billions being given to fund their personal agenda. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Abuja, Nigeria. I'm a Global Intelligence Society U.S. candidate for president 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. And I represent with many others, thousands of people in the city, local, neighborhood, vote-by-voter verification for whom, and uncensored freedom of speech and public comment. A Pittsburgh City Council concern that is shared by local councils nationwide is the vote. The United States Supreme Court, this is a representation of a citizen's brief 2023 to Chief Justice John Roberts and the court from Ronald Lynn Miller. Counties across the United States, and so the Pennsylvania-Allegheny County Election Division, do not permit a citizen to determine if his or her vote is lost or misapplied via vote-by-voter verification for whom, VVVFW. I and the GIS make the following positions to the USA SRT or RA. One, that the vote is the core expression of U.S. Constitution Amendment I, Freedom of Speech, FS. Two, that blocking citizen VVVFW deprives a citizen of freedom of speech, ripping vote control from the people. Three, that this VVVFW blocking and FS deprivation is unconstitutional. Four, that the U.S. Supreme Court should necessarily issue an emergency order to require VVVFW in all states of the United States of America in the 2024 election for president. Five, that a U.S. National Universal Paper ballot is necessary to secure the vote, eliminating the high probability of computer AI vote recording system manipulation. And six, that the non-political party, that non-political party neighborhood election bodies elected by neighborhooders are necessary to allow a citizen to do local neighborhood VVVFW with individuals he or she knows. I and the CGSII and GIS have devised such a neighborhood system which is appended. Citizens, you may vote tomorrow morning, but in the afternoon, you won't be able to check to see if your vote is right. That is what is at issue for us here. That is why I view this as at the core of what is wrong with our democracy and what, what we need to take control of again.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium.
My name is Rick Nor. I'm from Brookline. I wasn't really going to speak today, but there was some very troubling news that came out yesterday that I paid close attention to, and that's the downtown business environment in our office buildings downtown. I was really surprised to hear that the Grant Building is in financial trouble right now. There was an article in the Pittsburgh Business Times yesterday describing the problem. And the way I see it, from across the country, and Pittsburgh is going to be no different, we're going to run into some major problems here with our commercial office space throughout the country. And we have to really take a good, hard look at this city government, county government, state, whoever, and get money injected into this region. And what I'm talking about is particularly in downtown. Now, we have a lot of, I guess, overdevelopment in certain neighborhoods are doing quite well. But in downtown here in particular, it is turning into a ghost town very quickly. And when a building, and I don't know if the Grant Building is considered a Class A building, but from some of the other Class A buildings I see, it looks pretty desolate. And it's not going to be easy to convert them just to hotels and apartments. You just can't really do it. It's not physically possible. So what I'm trying to do is talk to people about finding ways to attract business into downtown. Now, I understand the mayor is working on a plan, but we got to get on it right away because this is going to, in all likelihood, have a cascading effect in the next, next two years or so. I expect terrible things to happen. And I don't know what we can do about it. I mentioned a rapid transit system from the airport to downtown, which I think will have a huge impact. But that's a big if. There, I, you know, I can't say I'm no expert, but it's been talked about for a long time, and maybe we can get that ball rolling somehow or get something else going. I don't know what else we can come up with. You just can't make business appear overnight. It's going to be a rough road ahead of us. So let's hope for the best, keep in the back of your minds and, and pay attention and try and do the best you can to help these people because they are in financial dire straits right now. And it all started with COVID. Things are coming back, but it's limited at best, particularly in the Golden Triangle area. And it shouldn't be because we have a competitive advantage over other cities. The only thing that I see as Achilles' heel is we do not have a rapid transit system which would tie all of our transportation systems together in our region. I'm talking about our LRT, all regional and national bus services are down at the Crayon Bus Station or in this area. And then the Amtrak system, which is down here at the end of Grand Street. If we could figure out a way to tie all these together with the airport, it would, it would definitely have a huge impact. But can we do it? That's a big question. So that's all I have to say. Hopefully, things don't get as bad as I expect them to be. But follow the business warnings. They're coming out everywhere. And one thing I do know is the way business works downtown here, and we have to pay close attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address City Council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I've dropped everything. But what I did was, I was going over my papers because I don't appreciate the way this council treats me. And I was thinking about taking it legal. But as I was going through my papers, I ran into a paper, 1999, and it was from the school board. And at the bottom of the paper, I had written that all we want is for whenever you're making decisions about our community, that we be in on it. Now, in 2002 is when my son, five cops let him die. 2003, Pedudo, as a councilman, wrote to WEC, and I had the letter where he's explaining about my son. He told me that WEC would see me. WEC never, never, never see me. I kept calling. They said his wife makes the appointments with WEC. At that time, Pedudo had, where he was going to have a public meeting. It was going to be an open forum, I thought. Okay, I was one of the first ones that came here. And Grant was the one that was doing the first person to come in. And then when they said, "Well, we could go in," we could, well, that's when Adrian Young, who had just walked in, goes in. When I went in, I was fussing at the mayor. And Ms. Smith, you should remember this because you remember I said, they said, "Coming down here to get what I can get." And I said, "My son was killed, and I can't even get an inquest." And that's when Ms. Smith has spoke up. But listen, in 2009, Furlough had, where he was going to Washington, D.C., and he said, "We're going, he's going to take our complaints up there." I had this shirt on. This is 2009. On the back, I write, "Do all lives matter? Anthony Johnson, 7/9/66, November 7, 2002. Rest in peace. No inquest while." Now, I had this sign of all my son and these ones that are running for district attorney. Now, I said not to power because he made a promise he never kept through. But this man right here, I put, I had it. I go to the restaurant, and the woman said, "You're before him? Do you know that he would not let a rape victim speak?" Now, if he does get to be our district attorney, someone should sit in that courtroom and watch how he treats the women. Because if a woman cannot speak when she's been raped, we don't need him. But the lesser of the two evils, that's a lot of times what we vote on. And that's what I vote on. I don't vote because you're Republican or Democrat. I voted how you treat the people. I don't care what you are. I just want you to treat us as we're human beings. And I'm asking you to please consider, I am a human being.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone else wishing to address City Council? Anyone else wishing to address City Council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill 2118, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Rhythm Square at 2239 Center Avenue at no cost to the city. Bill 2119, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1106 Reed's Dell Street, 21st Ward, City of Pittsburgh, at no cost to the city.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure. Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Kraus.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill 2120, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to execute necessary documents for the transmission of a drainage easement, temporary construction easement, and utility easement to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation over certain parcels in the 14th Ward in lieu of imminent domain in order to facilitate advancement of PennDOT's Commercial Street Bridge Replacement Project at no cost to the city. And Bill 2121, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a permanent easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company to provide, install, use, own, operate, maintain, repair, renew, and finally remove one anchor attached to a pole located upon city-owned property in Homewood Park at no cost to the city.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill 2122, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of a Single Payment in 2023 to 2826 Edwards Way Associates LLC and its attorneys, McMillan Law Office LLC, at a cost not to exceed $174,320 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 2123, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in favor of a single payment in 2023 to Sherry Kleindl and David Kleindl and their attorney, Meyer Darrah, in an amount not to exceed $25,000 in settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 2124, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in favor of a single payment in 2023 to Michael J. Weismantel and his attorneys, Wimmer and Talarico, in an amount not to exceed $17,500 in settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 2125, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of Public Safety, Director of Finance, and the Director of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a lease agreement or agreements with PNC Financial Services Group, Inc. for providing a police substation at 439 Wood Street over a five-year term beginning January 2024 with a total cost not to exceed $590,150 over five years. And Bill Number 2126, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Section 197.09 of the City Code under Article 11 of Title I Administrative by clarifying the discretionary roles of the mayor's office, city council, and the Ethics Hearing Board in managing the budgetary expenses of the Ethics Hearing Board and eliminating the role of the Ethics Hearing Board in determining the terms and conditions of their staff's employment.
Thank you. I'm sure we're going to have lots of conversations about that one. Can we have Councilwoman's, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, you have a motion to waive Rule 8?
I apologize, if you have a second. Motion on 2122.
2122?
Motion to waive Rule 8 on 2022.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill appear on tomorrow, on today's standing committee agenda. Thank you. Do we need executive session for that? Okay.
Yeah.
And then Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Oh, she has two papers. Yeah. Okay, sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill 2127, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Risk Factor LLC for a subscription to Risk Factor First Street Foundation Database for all data and hazard layers for all perils and parcels in the City of Pittsburgh, enabling support of city departments in planning for weather-related hazards at a cost not to exceed $20,000 over one year. And Bill 2136, Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of a Quick Claim Deed conveying all right, title, and interest in 5033 Electric Street and dedicating said property as part of the Hazelwood Greenway.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick, physically.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2128, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor's Office to enter a one-year mini reimbursement agreement for the 2023 Love Your Block Program at a cost not to exceed $20,000. Bill 2129, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the implementation administration of the Housing Counseling Program and related costs in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Bill 2130, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program so as to grant $25,000 to Brashear Association and authorize a subsequent agreement. And Bill 2134, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective January 1, 2020, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Cityview Church by $2,500 and increasing St. Michael's Food Bank by $2,500 and authorize subsequent agreements.
And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy. I have two resolutions, one appointment and one communications. Let's take the resolutions first, please.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 2132, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $27,000 within the 2023 operating budget from city council salaries and wages regular to council as a body for the purpose of professional services. And Bill Number 2133, Resolution Authorizing Naming the Unnamed Pavilion in West End Park to the Steve Bishinik Pavilion.
And can we have the one appointment, please?
And Bill 2134, Resolution Appointing Virginia Beck as a member of the Citizen Police Review Board with a term to expire October 31, 2027.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to interview, please?
So moved.
And a second? Virginia used to be our sergeant-at-arms here, for those who don't remember. And we also have another appointment that we're waiting to, I need to schedule that interview. So we'll do them both at the same time. Thank you. And all in favor of the interview? Okay. Any opposed? Okay, we'll hold for interview. And one communications, Madam Clerk.
Bill 2135, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb submitting a special report of the City of Pittsburgh Parks Tax Trust Fund dated October 2023.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
No move.
And a second? Any discussion? I will just say that Councilwoman Warwick has called for a post-agenda and has scheduled the post-agenda regarding this report. So thank you, Councilwoman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And our next order of business is reports to committee for final action. And we'll begin with, oh, I'm sorry, is there any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to reports to committee for final action. And we'll begin with Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2113, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for November 1, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1834, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I Administrative, Article 7, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, Section 161.02, Competitive Bidding, Exceptions, 161.02a, Award of Professional Services Agreements, and 161.02b, Exemptions from Competitive Process to amend the approval processes for professional services agreements and exemptions from the same. And Bill 2082, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation of six safety ladders from Friends of the Riverfront valued at $12,040 to be installed along the southern shore of the Allegheny River from Rachel Carson Bridge to Point State Park at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the vote? Aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works, Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill 2114, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for November 1, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2068, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Safety to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Tourism Fund for the purchase of non-florinated firefighting foam in the amount of $500,000 for this stated purpose.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the vote? Aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure. Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Kraus, please.
Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2115, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for November 1, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2074, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company to provide a permanent easement for the relocation of its electrical system in Hayes Woods at no cost to the city. Bill 2076, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Green Light Go program in the amount of $430,013 to upgrade traffic control switches. Bill 2077, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Green Light Go program in the amount of $954,552.43 to replace traffic signals at the intersections of Penn Avenue and Highland Avenue, South Aiken Avenue and Ellsworth Avenue, and Bayard Street and Neville Street. Bill 2078, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Lori Hefner for costs associated with the Davis Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $54,444, an increase of $24,444 to the amount previously authorized by Resolution 205 of 2022 to add additional funding for public art as part of the project. Bill 2079, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Golosec Construction LLC for costs associated with construction for the Critical Sidewalk Gaps Program, project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,156,475.35 reversible at 100%. Bill 2080, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Gannett Fleming, Inc. for costs associated with the Mount Washington Landslide Mitigation Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $2157,000, an increase of $157,000 to the amount previously authorized by Resolution 636 of 2021 to add additional funding for the services during construction phase of the project. Bill 2081, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Power Contracting Company for costs associated with the construction for the Pittsburgh Downtown Wayfinding Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,761,235 reversible at 100%. And Bill 2102, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with SAI Consulting Engineers for costs associated with the construction management and construction inspection phases for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $2,854,186.11 federally reimbursable at 95%.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the vote? Aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill 2116, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for November 1, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2083, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement and/or agreements and amendments thereto with Twilio for Internet-based communication services required to support various City of Pittsburgh customer engagement communications at a cost not to exceed $238,325 over two years.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the vote? Aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
No.
Seven ayes, one no.
Thank you. The bills, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. This is our last committee of the day. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2117, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for November 1, 2023. and Educational Affairs for November 1, 2,023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2069, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 442 52nd Street at no cost to the city. Bill 2070, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Miller and Reed Street at no cost to the city. Bill 2071, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land between a URA of Pittsburgh or a URA of Pittsburgh affiliate and Citizen Science Lab or a related entity for the sale of Block 27A, lots 178, 179, 177, 178, 179, 180, 180A, 181, 182, 183, 184, 186, 187, 188, and 189, in the 5th Ward of the, of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill 2072, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh for the Performance of Certain Work in Connection with the 2023 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $9,500, all council districts. And Bill Number 2073, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh Designating URA as the City's Agent for Administration of the 2023 2024 Home Investments Partnership Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $2,557,679, all council districts.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, Council will hold its steering, I'm sorry, its standing committee's meeting. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council Meeting webpage or call the Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 p.m. today. And on Wednesday, November 8, at 1:30 p.m., Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2023-2061, An Intermunicipal Liquor License Transfer for the Wheel Bar Incorporated. Also, in observance of Veterans Day holiday, on Friday, November 10, all council and clerk offices will be closed. The next Monday, next Monday, November 13, Council's regular meeting will commence with the Mayor's 2024 Budget Address. On Tuesday, November 14, Council will hold our standing committee's meeting at 10 a.m. and at 1:30 p.m., Council will begin an overview policy discussion for the 2024 budget. Cheering that meeting will be Councilman Lavelle. And on Wednesday, November 15, budget hearings will be, are set to begin. Is there anything from members? That's a lot to absorb. We have this on our website, I hope, so people know. Anything from members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve her minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.